Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome. As I call to order, the April 21st meeting of the Escambia County School Board. Whether you're joining us via our live stream or in the audience, we appreciate your interest in the education of the students of Escambia County. I ask that you silence your cellphones at this time. I remind you that if you wish to speak to either an agenda item or at public forum, you must complete a speaker form found at the table at the rear of the room and bring it forward to the lovely Ms. Dwelly at the front table. Fingers waving, thank you. It is the board's practice to pull items from the consent agenda when someone wishes to speak. The consent agenda includes items like curriculum and instructions, finance and business services, human resources, and operations. You must submit your form to speak before the approval of the consent agenda for those items. This meeting has been properly advertised in the Pensacola News Journal. It is a tradition of the Escambia County School Board to begin our meeting with invocation or a motivational moment, followed by the pledge of allegiance. This month, District Two, Mr. Fetzko will lead us. Mr. Fetzko?
Yes, I would like to ask everyone to join me in a moment of silence as we reflect and pray upon the health, safety, welfare of our students, what we could do individually and collectively to ensure success for these students as we go into the testing period and into the summer months, and to be safe as we do those things this summer that hopefully will be fun and restful for those students. So if you'll join me for a moment?
Please stand.
Thank you. If you'll join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. You may be seated. At this time, we will move to the adoption of the agenda. Mr. Superintendent, are there any additions or deletions to your recommended agenda?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. On page one, under Committee Departmental Reports, Item Four has been added. That is the Commissioner's Business Recognition Award. Also on page one, under Proposed Rules, Section Two, Permission to Advertise, Item A has been deleted. That's the Amendments to the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. Page two, under Curriculum, Section C, Elementary Education, Item One has been amended. That is the Summer School Programs 2021. And on page four, under Human Resource Services, Instructional Professional, Section Seven, Special Requests, Item B has been amended. That's the job description for Coordinator, Marketing, and Public Relations.
Thank you, sir. State statutes and school board rules require that changes made to the agenda after publication be based on a finding of good cause determined by the person designated to preside over the meeting and stated in the record. And I so state in the record that I have no objections to those changes. Is there any objections from any board member to the additions or deletions? Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended for good cause at this meeting?
Move the agenda for approval, as stated.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any discussion? If not, please vote.
Motion carries, 5-0.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we will move into Committee and Departmental Reports. First of all, we have someone representing PTA for a PTA presentation. Yes, ma'am. Welcome and thank you for being here.
Good evening, School Board Chair, fellow School Board members, superintendent and staff. ECC PTA hosted the Student of the Year Award Ceremony in partnership with Baptist Healthcare. Due to COVID restrictions, this event had to be modified. Even with modifications, we had an excellent response from schools. We recognized 49 students throughout the county. To see our slideshow, please go to the Escambia County Council PTA Facebook page. We have also provided each school that participated a link to view and share. Escambia County Council PTA will hold our second general session this Thursday evening via Zoom. We want to touch base with our local PTAs and encourage them to finish the race. Local units are also working hard in finding board members for next year. Every May, we usually hold an awards banquet, celebrating our unit's accomplishments. With the way this year has gone, with so many PTAs being unable to meet or provide any of their regular programs, we have decided to instead hold an end-of-the-year in-person celebration, like we've finished the race, to encourage our units to stay strong for the rest of the year and to encourage them to rebuild for next year. On behalf of the Escambia County Council of PTAs and our local units, I appreciate having the opportunity to share our good news.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, could I make a request?
A request?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, you can request.
I appreciated being sent the link for the Student of the Year, and I was wondering, since we were not able to shake their hands, could we have the chair draft a letter to congratulate each of those?
We have already discussed that, and that is going to be done, and I intend to sign it tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for making that suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stellar Employee of the Month, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is my pleasure this evening to announce the Stellar Employee for the month of April, who is Mrs. Donna Mogul. Mrs. Mogul, yes, please come forward with your coworkers, family, and friends. Donna Mogul is a data clerk two at Helen Cairo Elementary School. She has been at Helen Cairo Elementary School and with the district for 21 years. Mrs. Mogul has displayed dedication to the school as a parent, volunteer, and employee for over 20 years. As a data clerk, she is highly skilled and dedicated to her position, not just keeping records up to date, but in the support she provides administration, teachers, and staff on a daily basis. Donna Mogul is a team player who goes above and beyond for the faculty, staff, and families of the school. Mrs. Mogul wears many hats in addition to her position as data clerk. She serves as the backup for the clinic. She is the afternoon crossing guard. She monitors the hallway and assists faculty and staff with many other important tasks. Mrs. Mogul is always willing to assist Helen Cairo families by providing valuable resources or connecting them with others who can provide assistance. She never hesitates to stop what she is doing to help others by looking up student information, running reports, assisting with school fundraisers, and providing resources to faculty. Mrs. Mogul does all this with a positive and accommodating attitude. Helen Cairo is proud to have Donna Mogul on their team because they know they can always count on her support. There is no request too big or too small for Mrs. Mogul. Not only is she ready to step up to any task, if she does not have the answer, she is quick to find the person who does. She has been referred to as the go-to person for questions about attendance, SIS forms, report cards, schedules, and many other areas. She is well-informed and generally in the know regarding student health issues, attendance concerns, homelessness, and basic needs a student may have. Donna Mogul has developed positive rapport with the students, families, faculty, and staff of Helen Cairo. She is always encouraging a volume of knowledge, a valuable asset, and most importantly, a community servant. Donna Mogul is stellar because of her excellent work ethic and dedication to the staff and students throughout Escambia County School District. She exemplifies the pillars of people and service, and it is for these reasons and so many others that she has been selected as our Stellar Employee of the Month of April 2021. She will receive a plaque, pin, and a check for $100 from Members First Credit Union. Congratulations, Mrs. Mogul, and please approach the dais.
It truly is being Stellar Employee for the district. I just want to say Helen Cairo is the best place to work, so whatever I do there is very easy because these are my family. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and congratulations. Mr. Superintendent, Florida School Related Employee of the Year?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am pleased to inform you that Mrs. Teresa Cardwell is the school district's nominee for the 2021 Florida School Related Employee of the Year. This program recognizes outstanding education support personnel for the significant contributions they make to their schools and district school systems. The program honors one state representative and four finalists. Mrs. Cardwell, we are glad you are here, and if any family, friends, and coworkers haven't gathered, please feel free to come to the podium. Teresa Cardwell is a teacher assistant within the Alternative Education Department at the Juvenile Justice School. She has been with the district for 26 years and in this position for 12 years. Teresa Cardwell has shown dedication and exemplary performance as a teacher assistant at the Juvenile Justice School. She has been dedicated to the Escambia County School District and has spent the last 12 years devoted to helping at-risk students. Not only is Teresa committed to teaching and assisting students each day, she has shown an exemplary commitment to the overall improvement of the school environment. In addition to Teresa's work ethic, experience, and ideas throughout the school year, she has taken it upon herself to improve important data entry processes that have streamlined the process of onboarding new students. Anytime Mrs. Cardwell is presented with a new task, she accepts the challenge with excitement and a pleasant attitude. It is a pleasure to observe how Mrs. Cardwell interacts with some of the most at-risk students in our district. She encourages and motivates each student to be their very best. Her respect for them at a time when they may be feeling very low is inspiring. Above all, Teresa Cardwell is the State of Florida Employee of the Year because of her consistent and unwavering dedication to her family, the students of Escambia County, and her team at the Juvenile Justice School. Mrs. Cardwell will receive a plaque from the school district, and we ask you to please approach the dais.
And it's a thank you to Dr. Smith and members of the school board. I would like to take this time to thank Dr. Smith and school board members of Escambia County for selecting me, winning School Related Employee of the Year. It is my honor to receive this high achievement in representing our district and my department, Alternative Education. I wouldn't have gotten this far if it wasn't for my teacher in charge, Mercedes Musto, for nominating me the first go-around and winning Employee of the Month December of 2020, and for the support of Ms. Musto, my school, Juvenile Justice, DJJ, and my amazing director, Alternative Education, Ms. Carrie Coats and staff. I am so grateful for all the encouraging words and support during the time of receiving both of these awards. Ms. Musto and I have become a great team together. She guides me with all of our work throughout the day, and I make sure it gets done. I also have one thing to share. One of my students told me, "Ms. Cardwell, you truly deserve this award for working at DJJ with such challenging students. You keep coming back, you don't run away, and you show us your love." Also, just some people don't know this, but I lost my husband almost two years ago, and with God's grace, my work family, my own family, and my students, who I love dearly, I wouldn't have gotten through these past two years if I didn't have all these important people in my life to support and love me. I needed these two awards to show myself that I am important, and I will go on in everything I do and always will do my very best. Thank you for taking the time for me and letting me present this letter to my school district. Now, let's do this last big thing and win state.
Yes, ma'am. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are honored and proud to be able to recognize Fishbein Orthodontics as the Escambia County School District's Business Partner of the Year for 2020-2021. In addition to recognizing Fishbein Orthodontics as the district's Partner of the Year, we are also very proud to be recognizing them as our nominee for the Commissioner's Business Recognition Award. If we have representatives from Fishbein Orthodontics, would you please approach the The district's business partnerships are collaborative efforts that achieve mutually agreed-upon goals and objectives by matching community resources to identified needs of the school district and individual schools. Our business partners provide support and assistance to schools throughout the district in many ways. This support can be through financial contributions, in-kind donations, volunteer hours, or an expertise advisory role. Fishbein Orthodontics is so deserving of this recognition, and we are pleased to celebrate their many contributions to the students, families, and educators of the Escambia County School District. I will mention just a few of the several ways Fishbein Orthodontics has generously supported our district. Donated water bottles to all public school students in Escambia, Santa Rosa, and Okaloosa school districts. Donated percussion instruments to all Escambia County elementary schools. Provided complimentary orthodontic treatment to school-aged students who have overcome adversity in their lives or have shown significant acts of kindness. They provide this through their kindness initiative called Embraces. Provided pencils, snacks, and waters to schools for after-school tutoring. Provide teacher appreciation lunch, breakfast to their partners in education. They have catered and organized student principal lunches so principals may have quality time with groups of students. They love providing teacher inbox treats for teachers and staff every couple of months, whether it be snacks, pampering treats, or gift cards. Sponsor field trips that need assistance with funding. Provide Student of the Month, Artist of the Month bags with fun swag and $25 gift cards to their partners in education. They bring a prize wheel on table to any school carnival that PTA requests. They offer a hero discount to educators, school staff, and PTA presidents. We honor Fishbein Orthodontics as the Escambia County School District Business Partner of the Year, and we nominate them as the State of Florida's 2021 Commissioner's Business Recognition Award. Tonight, we have with us Dr. Ben Fishbein, Dr. Joey Fishbein, Lori Harris, Community Outreach Coordinator, Elisa Ray, Director of Marketing, and Brittany Sodaboda, I'm sorry, Director of Operations. Fishbein Orthodontics, we are very thankful for you, and we are so fortunate to have you as terrific partners for this school district. Congratulations, and we have a plaque for you. If you'd please approach the dais.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate everything.
Appreciate everything you do.
Thank you very much. Thank you for everything y'all are doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all those wonderful presentations. Now, we'll move into the public forum. The purpose of the public forum is to give members of the public the opportunity to address the board on any matter of concern, particularly regarding education and the administration of our schools. In this setting, we as board members are not compelled to answer questions or respond to you, but normally, and normally will not engage in back-and-forth dialogue in this venue. However, your concerns will be noted by this board and the superintendent for response. As always, we invite you to contact any one of us by phone or email for follow-up. A list of meeting times and locations is always posted on the Escambia County School District. Speakers must adhere to the guidelines printed on the back of the form. On this form, please be sure to indicate whether you are intending to speak at the public forum or for a specific agenda item. Please direct your comments to the chair. You are expected to be respectful to your address to the board. You are always asked to use titles, not individuals' names. Personal attacks against board members, superintendent, staff, employees will not be tolerated. If you fail to follow these guidelines, you will be warned by the chair and subject to removal if violations continue. Each board member, excuse me, each speaker will be allowed three minutes. Mrs. Odom as our parliamentarian and Mrs. Buswell as our timekeeper will start the timer with your opening remarks. The buzzer will sound when your time has elapsed. When the timer sounds, please bring your comments to a close as quickly as possible. Okay, we have a number of speakers, so we'll get right into it. The first speaker is Carrie Carroll. Come right on. Let me just tell you, as you're speaking in between the speakers, we will be cleaning the podium for safety's sake, so just give us a second. As I call the names, I will tell you that the next speaker after Carrie will be Charlie Wine. Thank you, ma'am. Go right ahead.
Okay.
Yes, please. You can take off.
Here.
Yes, we want to hear.
Right. Thank you so much for letting me speak. My name is Carrie Carroll, and I'm a parent of two IB students at Pensacola High School, along with a few other parents that were able to get in the room today. Good, you guys had a great turnout. Basically, I'm just here to talk about last week, we learned about the IB convocation that's coming up, that parents will not be allowed to attend, and that there was a date change. Obviously, we were incredibly, as parents, disappointed to learn this news of this meaningful ceremony and what it means to families. I know some of you have had IB students go through, so you understand that placing the soul around your student's neck is a very meaningful and touching time. It's a milestone, something that you won't be doing at any other point in their life. So in response to this news, a parent-generated survey was sent out to all senior families. There were three options given. One, talking about the current plan of the district, and then two, parent-sponsored events, one indoor and one outdoor. We received 92 responses in 48 hours. Just so you know, there's only about 94 families in our program. And of those 92 responses, 94.6% said that they want desire to attend in person and give their students their souls, that that's how important it is. On top of that, 77% of those three options chose a parent-sponsored event at the Wahoo Stadium on Thursday, May 27th at 6:00 p.m. On top of just showing the quickness that everything happened in the voting, we raised, as parents, all funds for this second event in less than six hours of the results of this survey. We secured enough money for a venue concessions and a photographer. I'm not here tonight, nor are my fellow parents here tonight, to argue your policy. That's not our purpose. What we are here is that we're here to ask that school faculty, staff be allowed to attend a parent-sponsored event at the Wahoo Stadium as our guests for free without fear of penalization. We really want, we know that it's important also for them to be there. The students would like for them to be there, but if it's a choice between their parents and the staff, there's not really a choice there. The students have also expressed their desires when the teachers came in and talked to them in English class last week. We can effortlessly provide social distancing through seating, through use of the announcer's box, if Ms. Dickerson would be allowed to even announce it as usual per the IB director's position there. We successfully held this event there last year in the height of the pandemic, when things were even crazier than they are now and without the vaccine, and we held a very successful event with the entire class and faculty was present there also. Please just take that under consideration. Please notify the staff and the faculty of your time, and thank you so much for listening. Appreciate it. Oh, one last thing. IB families plus PH faculty and staff equal an IB convocation, so little math thing to end it with.
Let me just make sure I understand. Your only request is that we don't do anything to the people that attend that are our employees?
Correct.
I don't see how there's anything we can do. Mr. Superintendent, I mean...
I understand the concern that you're sharing, and so we can look... I understand the concern that you're sharing, and so we can look at that and see...
It's a parent event, so that's, that kind of throws it into...
I think the concern is that if that event then becomes part of the school liability and so forth.
Well, it's parent-sponsored. It wouldn't be, like I said, we've already raised funds again. We raised funds the first time, but the school has that money, so we raised funds this weekend in less than six hours to cover a second event that would be completely planned and led by parents, so that teachers, faculty... I would hope some of you all would care to join us. We would love that. But yes, it wouldn't be the school, it wouldn't be sponsored as a school event. It's a parent-sponsored event. We would just like you all and the faculty that would normally be there to be our guests for free at our event, with no liability to the school, because you all aren't planning it or...
So we will look into that and look at what are our policies and so forth, how...
I think Ms. Odom can probably help us a great deal on that.
Yes, I was thinking the same.
Yes, thank you.
All so much. Appreciate your time.
Yes, thank you very much for coming.
Can we give them a timeline for when we can get back to them?
I would think we would be able to get back within a week, within a week's timeframe.
All right. Charlie Wine. Go right ahead, sir.
Hi, my name's Charlie Wine. I'm a senior at Tate High School. I'm going to tell you a story today about two different students that attend school in Escambia County. Student A is an athlete. Now, I love sporting events. I've gone to so many sporting events this year, all the senior nights for my friends. I go to them all. I go to everyone that I can. The athlete is allowed to participate in these games with spectators in attendance, indoors or outdoors. Student B is a performing arts student. Like myself, I am a trumpet section leader in the Tate High School band, and we are not allowed to have a concert with an audience, not even outdoors, where we can socially distance way beyond any rules you can come up with. Student A and Student B are not treated equally. This is discrimination. Look it up in the dictionary if you want to. I don't have time to do that. I only have three minutes, two minutes now. It is very important for kids to be able to perform, whether they play a sport or an instrument, chorus or drama. It's all important. It's all the same. A basketball game is no different than a band concert, except that there are a lot more sporting events than band concerts. This is killing the fine arts department. As a leader in the band, I witness every day the depression, lack of interest, and kids dropping out left and right. It takes special memories, performances, trips, and other events to keep people motivated. How can Student A get to do everything and Student B has everything canceled? Don't get me wrong, Student A should have nothing canceled. I have a very good friend that is a Student A and a Student B. I have several good friends. One of my good friends went to Tallahassee today to play in the tennis tournament for the regionals. He is a basketball, the one I'm going to talk about today, is a basketball player and a band member. He went to every single basketball game, traveled the district, and won, by the way, go Tate, and would have traveled out of town if they would have won their first playoff game. Now, he's not allowed to finish his senior year with a band concert outside. By the way, band is a non-contact activity. We do not share equipment. I don't pass my trumpet around like the basketball. Sports need to happen just as much as performing arts. As a senior, I've worked over seven years to perform at a concert for my senior year. Let's use common sense. How and why is this happening? Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wine.
Lord, thank you for letting me speak. I'm Teresa Morehouse, a band parent, so I will be echoing a couple of things that Charlie said, and I've known Charlie since middle school in band, along with my two daughters who attend Tate, a sophomore and a senior. Basically, I'm here to ask you to reconsider respectfully your decision not to allow concerts or performances by our fine arts departments in performing arts. This is not considered an extracurricular activity, per se. I would call it co-curricular. They go to band class every day. They sit in class together and play, and they have put a lot of effort, many of them since middle school. Their parents put a lot of money in lessons, instruments, and finally, they would like to share their performance with their families and friends. And just in the interest of the fine arts departments, I do think that this is a good thing. The middle school kids are looking up to the high school kids and deciding whether they want to even be a part of it next year, and I have heard that the numbers are very low for signing up for performing arts next year in high school. I would like to mention that our band has done a great job in mitigating the risk of being in band with COVID. They had spent $4,000 at least on bell covers for all of the instruments. All of our students wear masks as they play. We are able to socially distance the students in class, which we would very well be able to do outside if they were sitting on the football field, not running at each other, and had guests in the stands distancing and/or wearing masks, or whatever's necessary for us to have these events. I just want you to consider that there are a lot of, I understand there are a lot of things going on with COVID, but we are well-prepared, especially at Tate, to handle any kind of COVID-related activities. If we want to do temperature checks, or if we want to make sure that everybody is distanced, we can do that. We have a great football field that we can do concerts at. I am disappointed that we are not allowed to have banquets. Our band banquet is for students only. It is not involving families or parents. It's strictly for the students to celebrate the end of their year and to give awards to each other, and they're just disappointed, one thing after another. They weren't able to march this marching season. We were able to only stand on the field and play, and I just implore you to please reconsider. It would mean so much to so many children that are in the performing arts, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Ms. Endicott. Or was that Ms. Endicott that left with the first speaker? Okay, good. We'll take care of that. Next one, Annie Howell. Any chance she's in the adjoining room? Yes, A-N-N-I-E.
Gave your time to someone?
Okay, I don't know who.
Could you come up to the mic so we can hear what you said? Thank you so much.
Who was the time given to?
I gave my three minutes to Tanya Burson. This is her.
Thank you. Just has to find the sheet.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Burson. I'm a third generator, Escambia County school bus operator. I've driven for the county for 12 years with no disciplinary issues. I have a current physical card till June 3 of 2021. I was issued my physical by Marathon Health Clinic in June of 2019. Approximately five months later, in November of 2019, I pulled a muscle in my right shoulder. I couldn't get in to see my primary physician, so I went to the emergency room, where I did a chest X-ray. I was informed at that time I had a suspicious spot on my left lung. I followed up with my primary doctor, was referred to a pulmonary doctor, who did a biopsy. It came back inconclusive. But for the next year, we did CT scans and PET scans. In December of 2020, I was referred to Pensacola Lung Group, where I became a patient of Dr. Berix, a pulmonary specialist. He ordered another biopsy. It came back non-small cell adenocarcinoma lung cancer. At that time, I became a patient of Dr. Lundquist, a cardiac thoracic surgeon, as well as Dr. Nicholas Drake, my oncologist, a team of doctors that I have put my life and my faith Dr. Lundquist performed an upper lobotomy on February 26 of 2021. I've recovered well, and I'm cancer-free. Dr. Drake and Dr. Berix will be checking up on me with CT scans and PET scans for the next 10 years. I used my sick leave while I recovered. I did not use my FLMA. I received a letter from Marathon Health stating that I needed to make a pre-assessment appointment for my DOT physical, and I did. It's also required by risk management that after having a major surgery, that you go let Marathon check you out. I don't have a problem with that. But as I made my appointment for April 6, I filled out the paperwork, I took my doctor's notes from my surgeon and my oncologist that stated I may return to work with no restrictions as a school bus operator. Well, Ms. Alexandra came back and said, no, you have to do a pulmonary function test and come back every three months for the next two years. Well, of course, I was upset. I mean, I've got doctor's notes, I'm cancer-free, I'm good, right? Well, I asked her for documentation of, you know, why. So what she gave me was guidelines, or it said recommendations. So, you know, I just, I was stunned, actually. So I got to talking to her, and I told Dr. Alexandra about having to go to the ER in 2019 for a pulled muscle, and she responded by saying I should have come to Marathon Health. Well, that's true. She could have, she could have treated me for my shoulder, a pulled muscle, but what she can't do, and she's not qualified to do, is discredit the team of doctors that cured me. So I would still be driving a school bus, I would still have lung cancer, and I wouldn't have any issues renewing my physical. I've complied with Dr. Alexandra, Marathon Health, as well as risk management. I've paid my insurance, I've paid my deductibles, I've met my out-of-pocket, only to be told that my doctor's notes aren't good enough. Dr. Alexandra went as far as to say the Sacred Heart and Baptist CDL physical doctors are not doing their jobs. It's strange to me that after 12 years of having a CDL physicals, I have never had to go three months in advance to prepare for one. Let's see, I have now a current physical that is good through 2022, because I went to Baptist Occupational Health and got one myself. I, you know, I can use this, I can use my CDL to transfer within the county. I can drive a garbage truck, I can drive a dump truck, I could drive a box truck that pays well more than school bus operators make, but I can't drive a school bus. Thank you.
Did she have more than, did she have two? So she had nine minutes? Okay. You still have time?
Do you want to take some more time?
You know, us go to Marathon Health Clinic, which is a free clinic, you know, and use Dr. Alexandra's recommendations or guidelines, or just, you know, a team of qualified specialists that's released me, and I'm cancer-free. So I don't understand why we're having to go through this. It's not just me. You know, it's all of the drivers. You know, we deserve better. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead.
Thank you all for taking the time to listen to those of us who have things to say to y'all. I am a color guard parent at Tate High School, and I have a senior. All of these seniors, juniors, all the high school students, all the students, period, have been through a lot, as we all have these past two years. They've had losses, family members that have passed away, a lot of things to overcome, and yet they strive to do as we've taught them, to advocate for themselves, to advocate for each other, to advocate for those who aren't able to advocate themselves. These kids perform together, they rehearse together, they go to class together, even the kids who are staying home as remote students, they still come and participate in rehearsals in person, they have practices in person, and they've had very little opportunity to perform in person. So we would like for y'all to consider allowing them to continue to show the skills that they've learned, the education they've received, and share it with their families and friends. They would also like to be able to celebrate each other in a band banquet, which is held off-campus. It's not paid for by the school. The students all have always thrown in to pay for it themselves. The parents set it up, and it's just for students and their instructors. The parents don't even attend that band banquet, so they're all ready together, and I see no reason why we wouldn't consider allowing them to be together, to celebrate each other, especially the seniors, one last time. So if y'all would just take that information in consideration, the points that Charlie made and Teresa made, and I think you have a couple other people who have points to make as well, please consider allowing them a little bit of normalcy at the end of this school year. Thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Is there any way that before I start speaking, I can have my coworkers join me, please?
Sure. Uh-huh.
Thank you for allowing me and us the opportunity to speak review. We were told a couple of board meetings ago to send our concerns to Tallahassee. Several drivers, including myself, sent letters, and we all received the same response in return. That response was, "Thank you for contacting Governor DeSantis. We are sorry to hear of your difficulties and appreciate the opportunity to respond to your letter. Your best source of assistance is your city council members and county commissioners. We encourage you to share your input with the Escambia County Commissioners to reach a resolution regarding your concerns. Contact information for your local officials is below." And then it gives us the contact information, and it says, "Thank you again for contacting Governor DeSantis." And it is signed by Martha Lynn. So at this point, we've done our part, so if we could please come up with a solution, that would be really appreciated. Thank you for listening.
Okay, the next speaker is Teresa Davis, and you have six minutes.
I'm not nearly as prepared as some of the others, but if I may, I would like for my colleagues to stay and stand with me as I am speaking for all of us. I started driving a school bus the year 2000. I did so without any complaints, and I love my job, that's why I'm still here. So for 19 years, I drove a bus. On December 2019, I was informed by Marathon Health that I needed to get a pre-assessment for my DOT physical, which did not expire till April 19, 2019. They decided at the time when I showed up to go ahead and do my exam. Me having nothing to hide, I did not see a reason for me not to. So during the exam, after probably 20 minutes, the physician's assistant, I think is the one that did my exam, but she went out of the room, stayed for 10, 15 minutes, came back in with a DOT book, which I've never seen. You know, I studied and passed my test, but I had never actually seen a DOT book. And she had underlined where it stated that if you have neuropathy, you cannot receive your DOT physical. Well, I've had neuropathy for 12 years. As you can see, thank the good Lord, I walked in here on my own, I can still do hopscotch with my grandkids, and I was able to pass a flex test every year, which times the response from moving from the brake to, or to the gas to the brake, back and forth, getting up, running out of a bus, jumping out of the back. I have never failed one in my now 22 years of service. So after she told me that, she did say in fine print, it stated that I could go to my neurologist, let him give me a driving skills test, and come back to see him. Well, I have not used my neurologist in five years, so it took me till April to get in to see him. He did the same exact test as Marathon Health Clinic had done on me, except he actually also did a test seeing if my neuropathy had progressed, and it had not. And he also stated to me that he was shocked that they had failed me because of my neuropathy. He said, "I have people with neuropathy that can't even walk in here." And like I say, I've had it for 12 years, and I did a great job driving a school bus for Escambia County. I also, after seeing my neurologist, I decided that I was not going to fight this because so many people were having problems with it. I had been here in service for 22 years, and I did not want to lose my job. So because of my dedication, I was offered an AIDS job, which I accepted. But when I walked out of Marathon Health Clinic in December, I was without a job, Christmas time coming, and for what reason, something that I've had for many years. My neurologist stated that he would write me a letter, but the letter would state that I had neuropathy. And I knew I would go round and round with them at Marathon Clinic if I even said such a thing to, because it is like I feel, they think that no one else in Pensacola is qualified to give you a DOT physical. I disagree with that totally, even if we, I think some of the drivers even offered to pay out-of-pocket to get their physical, because we need these jobs, you need us, and without us, children are not going to get to school. And I think our record, our mind speaks for my ability to safely drive a school bus. So I just think that they are taking it a little too far when their word or their recommendation is stronger or more beneficial or accurate than specialist. Thank you.
Okay, Nicholas Sawyer. Just checking, you're here. Okay, Tanya Burst, Tanya? Okay, so that's good. I got that one. Sorry, paperwork is piling up here. Okay, and let's see, donating time to Kaderius Jones, so I have six minutes for Kaderius Jones. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. If I may, have my, not coworkers or friends, but family staying with me. All right. Good evening, members of the board. I come to you today as a driver on behalf of the Transportation Department. As you all were made aware of, this year has been the most challenging for our department, being 100 drivers short, double and sometimes triple-loading routes, extremely late buses, both morning and afternoons are just a few of the daily challenges we've not only faced but overcome. We stand here today because the uncertainty of how we will be able to do it again with the next school year rapidly approaching, and all students are returning to traditional learning. It's not the type of work we do that makes people leave, it's the pay. That's the main reason we can't retain drivers, and we constantly lose drivers. Just this week, we have lost five drivers to competitive jobs that offer better pay. Now to the average person, five may be a low number. Well, when you break these numbers down in a bus driver's perspective, it turns to be so much more. Five drivers leave five open routes. Let's say all five drivers were on three-tier routes, meaning they cover elementary, middle, and high school. This means now we have 15 routes that need to be covered, whether split or double back, or, excuse me, double back four. Now, let's add the students to these routes. That means with 15 open routes and approximately, give or take, 50 students on each bus, that's 750 students without a driver. 750. That's way too many kids who are late and missing out on an education. We cannot, we simply cannot start off the next school year the way it's currently ending. We are here this evening because we want to be, we want to be a successful department, we want to succeed, and we refuse to get up and let our district fail. Two of our biggest competitors are ECAT and ECUA. We don't transport adults around to run errands. We don't empty trash cans, we don't pick up debris on the side of the road. We transport the future of the county to their education. Our cargo is the most precious, excuse me, our cargo is the more, the most precious than any vehicle out on the road. We as a whole would just like to feel as if we are just as important as the rest. Thank you for hearing our time and our concerns. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am. Go right ahead.
Right, thank you. I am here also supporting Tate High School and all the other BAN students across Escambia County. I'm the parent of a junior that is in the Tate Show Band of the South. My concern simply is, I understand that all the students have had a very big year as far as impacted over the last several, or couple of years with sports and what have you. Sports is a little bit different, and we do understand that, that it's actually governed by the FHSAA, so they actually follow a different set of rules, which have allowed the football, the cheer, the wrestling, the flag football, and lacrosse to all have uninterrupted seasons, which is absolutely fantastic. But in turn, our performing arts students are not allowed to have the same set of rules as the state of Florida has set forth for the other students. And that really is my main concern. Why is it that we are punishing our students that are performing arts versus where our other ones have been able to go and perform and travel and compete and do all the things that they absolutely need to do as part of their co-curricular activity? But unfortunately, again, our performing arts students are not able to. There has actually been quite a few precautions that have been in place by our directors. The concert is on the field, they are separated, the parents are in the stands, separated as well. Again, there are bell covers, there are masks, there are all these other things that they use during these concerts in order to protect them. And again, with the banquet, they are with the same students they are with every day, and their same instructors every day that they sit beside. Parents are not allowed to attend. You know, those are just to celebrate those students for their achievements throughout the year, and unfortunately, this is being taken away from them when the other students are not able, the other students are actually able to go and attend their games and what have you. So not to be snarky or what have you, but, you know, does it need to have a scoreboard and a trophy and a win in order for those, all the students to be heard and appreciated? Or are all of our students across Escambia County able to perform and do what they do? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The only other request I have is for an agenda item, so we will get to that when we get into the agenda. Is that everybody, ma'am? Thank you very much. Moving on. Next item on the agenda is minutes from four meetings. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes from March 11, 12, 23, and 23?
No move.
No move by Ms. Hightower, seconded by Mr. Fetzko.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we do not have any new business or any unfinished business, so we will now move into the consent agenda. Are there any items, we'll take each group individually, that need to be pulled? First one would, items would be in the items of curriculum. Do I have a request to pull any items in curriculum?
I would like to pull the elementary ed, the summer school program, just for a comment.
Okay, give me a number.
It's C1, but the first numbers are...
I got it. Elementary education.
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any items in finance and business services? Okay, nothing? And as my usual comments are, on Friday, we went through each of these items to discuss, and so that's why you're probably not hearing a lot of things being pulled. Thank you. Okay. We will now move into voting on the items.
What was the one that was, was it part of the consent agenda, the one that had a speaker?
It's a discipline item under the superintendent.
Just wanted to be sure.
Got you. Thank you. So do I have a motion to approve the items without approving the one item that we have pulled from the consent agenda?
No moved.
Thank you, Mr. Fetzko. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? No? Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, sir. All right, now back to item under curriculum, under C1, Escambia County School District, the Florida Summer School Program to 2021.
I move the adoption of the Escambia County Florida Summer School Program.
I'll second for discussion.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to say thank you to the superintendent and the CNI staff for coming up with this wonderful program to be able to address as many students as possible in summer school, and from my conversation with Mr. Marcany, oh, letters will be going out to parents, and so, parents, please carefully consider the opportunity that we are providing to your student, and get, get word back to us as soon as possible that you'll be taking play, that you'll be taking part.
I think it's also important to say thank you to the elementary teachers that are going to teach. This may be a summer This may be a summer where everybody wants a big vacation. So, it's a bit of a sacrifice to say, "I'm gonna stick around another month." It's not just for the big money. It's a matter of that they, the teachers, I think, feel how important this is, and in, they can make an impact for their individual school, because they're in their school. They're not looking at probably students from other schools. So, any comments, Mr. Superintendent?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for those, those thoughts you just shared. I, I find the same thing. Our, we just heard from bus drivers who work because they love transporting kids and supporting schools, and we have food service employees, custodial staff members, and then the list goes on and on. And it will take quite a few adjustments and people taking on those jobs for the summer. So, we are excited about summer school and hoping for big numbers of student enrollment in the summer programs.
Thank you, sir. So we have a motion and a second. No more discussion, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, there are no items from the board. We have, first take student items from the superintendent.
We do not have any items listed for item one. For item two, we do have student discipline, item A, disciplinary reassignment. Recommend approval for item A, as noted on the board agenda with details provided in the board backup.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion?
I'll move the superintendent's recommendations for approval.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hightower. Any, any discussion? If not, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Also, under item number two, item B, expulsions, recommend approval for item one, as noted on the board agenda, with details provided in the board backup.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion?
No moved.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, next, I have a request to speak on an item. I'm hesitant, I don't want to mention the name. I will mention the, that we have an attorney, Mr. Jean. No, no, Mr. Jean Mitchell has requested to speak. How are you, sir?
Super.
And so you now have your time.
You're very kind. We're here, more or less, because, he doesn't say his name, Mr. McCoy felt compelled to come here. I did meet with him in the hallway, and I said, you know, we might just go home. He said, "No, I'd like to trust this process, and I'd like, like to appear."
Are you sure you're talking into the mic?
Yeah. Beg your pardon.
Yeah, if you raise that mic a little bit, it might help, too.
How's that?
Okay.
Wonderful.
That's good.
Guys, I want you to get to know James McCoy. I mean, he's trusting the process, he is accused of something. He presents his innocence, he presents with the defense to the criminal charges that are against him. He has talents, his peers like him, and I'm gonna work really hard for him in the criminal system. He desires to pursue a career in education. I would offer to you, Mr. Superintendent, we haven't met before, welcome.
Thank you.
That sometimes what happens is, you know, different folks use different vocabulary words. Small-time criminal defense lawyers and people that work in the criminal defense system or criminal system, when we use words like conviction, they mean, you know, conviction, adjudication of guilt. And then folks wind up here in this forum, and, and Mr. Slaton might, might recall Coach Washington from a number of years ago, where the school board said on Channel 3, "As long as he's not convicted, he won't lose his career," right? And he wound up engaging in a program, a pre-trial intervention program that the state attorney's office, you know, offers to some folks for, you know, smaller offenses. And the case against him was dismissed, you know? And the reason Coach Washington entered into that program was because the school board went on Channel 3 and said, "Well, if the charges, you know, if he's not convicted, then he'll keep his career." So different agencies mean different things when they say convictions. What I'm trying to say is, I hope you, you know, you recognize, you know, your soldier, Mr. McCoy, myself, and Mr. John Barasa, dear friend of mine, we're gonna work really, really hard for him, and hopefully, we're gonna prevail. And Mr. McCoy wants to have as a career, working with you guys and being an educator. And I know from talking to some of his students and some of his, his peers, you know, Jade Brown, the old Woodham Titan, hold him in high regard. So, anyway, we're not here because we wanted some time, we felt compelled to be here. Thanks for listening. Happy to answer any questions if you have any for me.
Other questions, have a look from the board?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Forgive me, I'm ignorant. Are we voting on something for him tonight? Or, you know, he said he was compelled to be here, he got a letter, some piece of correspondence compelling him to come down?
The item on the agenda is for, is this A?
It would probably be appropriate for me to have a conversation with the individual and his attorney, but not in the public forum.
Right, but...
Probably.
But we are, we are acting on an item.
There are four different items...
Yes.
...on this agenda that deal with employee discipline. But Mrs. Odom and I will be more than happy to speak to the individual and the attorney.
Very kind. Slaton, nice to see you again.
Nice seeing you, Jean.
So do you need a recommendation on items A and B?
Need a recommendations on employee discipline, number three, items A and B.
Yes, that's...
Move the, the approval of the superintendent's recommendations.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Thank you. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Then we have item four.
Yes, item four, other items, recommend approval for items A and B, as noted on the board agenda, with details provided in the board backup.
I'll move the superintendent's recommendations.
Thank you, sir.
I'll second that.
Let's go seconded. Any discussion? Thank you very much.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. All right, next item, internal auditing, inventory adjustment reports. 24 cost centers, some of that wonderful reading that we all do, but I'd like to thank that department, because if the public doesn't understand, that's, they do a great job of watching over your money and what's spent, and, and it's not a matter of trying to catch you, it's a matter of just honestly saying, "We're getting, you're getting your money's worth." So, do I have a motion to accept these reports?
I make a motion to accept the reports.
Thank you very much. Second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion? If not, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
We have no items from our new general counsel. Do I have any, any items for the good of the order? Anybody? Yes, sir?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to mention, I don't know if anybody's seen it, but for Broward School District, hackers had sought $40 million in ransom from that school district, and they refused to pay it. And the hackers released 26,000 stolen files to the public domain, most of it with accounting and financial records. So, everybody pay attention to what IT tells you to do.
That's, yeah. Yes, ma'am?
I think all of us received an email requesting us, as a board, to make a statement about the Bright Futures Scholarship. I don't know that we want to do that. I, for one, am definitely in favor of it remaining the way it is. I had children that benefited from that, and for them to put it into a, a place where the, the amount changes based on political whim, I shouldn't say that, but it's true. I know that, that, you know, the, to, to wait until May, the session would be over. It probably is not gonna pass this time, but surely, as we sit here and say that, it could happen. But I took the one from Marion County and wrote, "The Escambia County School District opposes removing the Bright Futures Scholarship promise to pay tuition. The district also opposes removing the promise to provide a textbook funding stipend to students who receive the Academic Scholars Award. Under proposed Senate Bill 86, the Bright Futures Program promises to pay 100% of tuition for academic scholars and 75% to 100% of tuition for Medallion Scholars. This promise would be broken. Instead, the amount of these awards would be determined year to year during the state budgeting process. The Bright Futures Scholarship Program promise should be kept in law, as it is, so that students who receive awards and their parents can depend on consistent scholarship funding while attending a college or university in Florida." And I would have to ask the attorney if it would be appropriate that I could make that motion and see if anyone would second that, and we could take care of that business. I'm sorry I didn't make copies for everybody, but I'll give one to Holly.
That's okay. When, when did this come to your attention? When was this brought to your attention?
Today.
Okay. It's not something that's been advertised on the agenda, but it is something that I think could have been, been addressed in, it may be the better course of action to wait, well, you said it's gonna be after the...
Yeah, the session ends in two weeks.
I, I think that the circumstances are such that, that it, it would be appropriate for the board to, to vote. I'm guessing that there's no, is there any official action that you're, that's being requested? Is there, or is...
We're just making a statement that we...
Certainly, that's appropriate. You're not taking any action.
Nothing that costs us money.
Right. I'm comfortable with that.
I second it.
Did you make the motion?
I did.
Okay. Mr. Fetzko seconds it. Any other discussion?
I agree completely. I think that it's imperative that parents know exactly where they stand, where students know that their scholarships are gonna go. I think that when the Bright Futures is funded through the lottery, and the lottery monies, as proposed when the lottery first started, have changed and changed and changed. And there's less, you know, you talk to people in the public, and they say, "Well, you're getting all this lottery money." And I just laugh. The lottery money is not coming to the schools, it did not supplement, it ended up being supplanting, the, the general fund money was taken away, which was exactly what the public didn't want, but it happened. And I think that letting the legislature dictate the, the amounts on a yearly basis is detrimental to, to students achieving higher education. I agree.
Dr. Adler, anything?
Could we...
Yes. Would you please repeat the motion?
Do you wanna weigh in before I repeat it?
Yes, thank you, thank you very much.
If I may, before you do this, I did, just did some quick checking. It's been a while since I've dusted off my Roberts rules. But you can add an item to the agenda after the agenda has been posted, if the board determines by a majority vote that an emergency exists. So, the proper course from this point on would be for you to take a vote, to determine if the board finds this to be an emergency, and that is completely up to your discretion, based on the circumstances that we're faced with, which Mrs. Hightower has already articulated. So the proper course would be to first, find whether or not you determine that this is an emergency situation that warrants the late ad. If that motion carries, then you may proceed.
Does she have to withdraw the motion before we do the second?
I would recommend that, just for the, the sake of clarity.
Okay, so, if you would, ma'am?
Yeah, we'll withdraw the motion. Do you withdraw your second?
We withdraw your second. Now, would you read, oh, Mr. Superintendent, would you make comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it's very important that we note, a couple of years ago, Florida ranked very high as an educational system throughout the country, when you looked at the U.S. World News Report ranking.
Mr. Superintendent, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think it would be appropriate for the board to determine...
Oh, the emergency.
Whether or not there's an emergency before we have further discussion.
I move that the board consider a statement on the Senate Bill 86 as an emergency, as the session ends in two weeks.
I'll second that.
The motion, Mr. Adams is seconding. Is there any discussion on the emergency motion? If not, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Now, can he comment now, or should we make another motion?
Make the motion again.
I will press the button. I do want to say, just for the board's information, that an emergency is defined as circumstances that could not have been reasonably anticipated, and I think the fact that this was brought to you today would satisfy that. And it requires immediate attention for the reasons which you have stated.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am?
This is a, excuse me, a motion to, to make a statement from our school board and our school district. The Escambia County School District opposes removing the Bright Futures Scholarship promise to pay tuition. The district also opposes removing the promise to provide a textbook funding stipend for students who receive the Academic Scholars Award. Under proposed Senate Bill 86, the Bright Futures Program promises to pay 100% of tuition for academic scholars and 75% to 100% of tuition for Medallion Scholars. Promise would be broken. Instead, the amount of these awards would be determined year to year during the state budgeting process. The Bright Futures Scholarship Program promise should be kept in law, as is, so that students who receive awards and their parents can depend on consistent scholarship funding while attending a college or university in Florida.
And I second that motion.
Discussion, Mr. Superintendent?
So I think with this, when, when you look at our, our ranking a couple of years ago, there were two components of it. One of the components was our post-secondary education, which ranked exceedingly high. And Florida university system ranked high because of the, the cost. The tuition fees comparatively are, are outstanding. But then also the quality of the programs and the educational experience that students were having and what they were learning. And my concern when I hear about changes with Bright Futures is losing that edge of excellence that exists in our university system. I can speak personally, both of my kids went through the university system, both of them benefited from Bright Futures. It's a, it's a huge help, it's an incentive. As, as a high school principal, I remember a student taking the SAT in July after graduation. It was the last opportunity, motivated, highly, highly motivated to get to the high level of Bright Futures, received 15 more points on the SAT and got over that, that next level. Tremendous impact for that, for that family to, to have that Bright Futures come in. So, I, I just, I, I think the Bright Futures Program is a powerful program, and I think it benefits many, many students. And I think we need to continue to be on that cutting edge with our university system, because it's a quality, quality system.
Without being too tacky, I want to say, I don't want to give any, any opportunity for the legislature to get a hold of that money and do anything else with it besides award scholarships to our students. award scholarships to our students. That's what it was meant for. And so I, I just don't believe we need to give them that opportunity. And the other thing was what you said, we had a lot of students not staying in the state of Florida because of the cost. Bright Future has kept the brightest of our students in the state of Florida.
Yes.
And you can talk about Florida State or University of Florida and how much they benefited Florida, Central Florida, South. University of West Florida is benefiting greatly from this. So, yes, I certainly will support that. Anything else?
I, I agree with the chair on, on that. The, the same reasons we started Bright Futures, it's valid today. And they, they offered out that little gift, you know, for Bright Futures for the lottery, okay, for the gambling. And so they should keep that promise that they had when it was originally stood up.
Adler, anything? Thank you. If not, please vote on this emergency motion.
Motion carries five zero.
I thank the board for their patience.
I thank Ms. Hightower for bringing that to our attention. Thank you very, very much. Any other items? Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.